Hello. Welcome to another forum of the League of Women Voters of Greater Tucson. This is a forum of the supervisor candidates for District 5. We're very glad that you have joined us today. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that neither supports nor opposes any particular political party or candidate. This candidate forum is a service to the community. I am Vivian Hart, the moderator for this forum. Now, you can send the candidates questions if you'd like. They are taking questions throughout the Zoom webinar today. You can send the questions in at your convenience. So to ask a question, find the Q and A button on the bottom of your screen. So move your cursor to bring up the menus on the bottom and the Q and A is, you'll see that on the bottom of your screen and click on that icon. So when the Q and A panel opens, type your question directly into the box. League members will collect the questions and communicate them to me and I will ask them of the candidates. Let me tell you what the Board of Supervisors does. The Board of Supervisors is responsible for steering public policy in Pima County. The Board provides direction to the county administrator and the county's various departments to create safe communities, nurture economic development, sustainably manage natural resources, and protect public health. In addition to overseeing the delivery of many municipal services such as our roads, our parks, our libraries, and law enforcement, Board members are responsible for approving the county budget. And Board members also set the amount of taxes to be levied. So let's now meet the candidates. Fernando Gonzalez is a Republican. He has lived in Tucson for approximately 50 years. He is a first generation son of immigrants. He grew up working in the agricultural fields in Marana and in California. He's worked for government, nonprofits, and private industry. He's currently retired after 20 years of owning his own business. He's now a member and policy director of Poor Un Arizona Unido and he's been with that organization for six years. He was a member of the Character and Fitness Committee of the Arizona Supreme Court for three years. He was a member of the Board of Governors for the State Bar of Arizona for six years. And he was a member of the Arizona Religious Advisory Board for six years. And now let's meet Adelita Grohava. She is a Democrat. She's a native of Tucson. She was educated through the Tucson Unified School District Schools and the University of Arizona. She is the Director of the Pima County Teen Court, which is a juvenile court diversion program, and she's been with that program for over 25 years. She is currently a member of the TUSD School Board and she's currently serving in her fifth term. She has also served as a member of the Democratic National Committee, is a founding member of Las Adelitas, and is on the Board of the Educational Enrichment Foundation. Welcome to both of you. So now, what I'd like to do is go over how the questioning will take place. You will each have two minutes to introduce yourselves. Then I will ask you several questions. The first candidate will have one and a half minutes to answer. The second candidate will have one minute to respond. And then the first candidate will have 30 seconds to respond. The questions will be asked in a rotating basis back and forth. After the questions, you will each have one minute for a closing statement. So let's begin. Mr. Gonzalez, you have two minutes to introduce yourself.
Well, thank you very much for inviting me to be in this forum. I want to thank you all for the invitation. I've been living in Tucson, as previously mentioned, for about 50 years. I've done volunteer work since I was probably 19 years old, starting in California and then we came back to Arizona. So I've been here in the Tucson area for about 50 years. I've owned a business for twenty some years. One of the things that I have always loved about being here is just the diversity of people and people who live here. Currently, I am retired. I retired a couple of years ago. But when I was the owner of my own business, we donated to about 50 nonprofit organizations. Not only did I like donating and giving back to the community, but I actually have participated in volunteering. I volunteered for Salvation Army for the border action for Poor Un Arizona Unido, not just as a board member, but actually being one of the actual volunteers. And so I've had a rich background and diversity and working with people from many different backgrounds. The reason I want to become a supervisor is because eight years ago I ran for a supervisor and I noticed that there was a lot of poverty. The roads were a mess. The county was in debt. And so eight years later, I see that the same thing is going on. Nothing has really ever changed. So I do want to make a change and that's the reason why I decided to go ahead and run this year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now Ms. Grohava, you have two minutes to introduce yourself.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity and thank you to the League of Women Voters and for everyone who is participating. Thank you to Mr. Gonzalez for participating as well. For everyone who's taking time out to listen to us now and also to anybody who's going to listen to this later, I really appreciate your time. My name is Adelita Grijalva. I am a parent. I am an education advocate and a lifelong resident of Tucson and District 5. I want to continue to volunteer and support a community that has really afforded me so much. I am qualified and prepared and as a supervisor, I will be able to get right to work. I think that it's important for us to have representation that is comfortable representing such a hugely diverse district. We have the Sawato National Park on one end, University of Arizona, the Hona'otam and Pasqueyaki tribes, and those are just some of the landmarks that we represent. And so as a member of the TUSD Governing Board, it has been my responsibility to serve the 220 square miles and all of the people in it and make sure that I'm representing with a core set of values that I bring, which has to do with ensuring equity, transparency, and strong advocacy. I do want to acknowledge that the only reason that I am running is because our dear friend, Richard Lee, has passed away very suddenly and I would like to continue to work towards conservation efforts, ensuring that we have economic development and really advocate for the progressive values that we both share and hold dear. Thank you so much for the opportunity to continue to talk about some of the ideas that I think are important in District 5.
Thank you very much. Now, Mr. Gonzalez, you are the first person to answer this question. You have one and a half minutes. The question is, what is the most important thing you want to accomplish as supervisor?
I think right now because of the pandemic, I think economic recovery is going to be very important and it's going to be top on the list. You know, the lack of jobs equals poverty and that's something that's not new in our county. It's been in our county. That's why I ran again because eight years ago, one in four kids live in poverty. Today, there's one in five families who live in poverty. So economic recovery is going to be bad with this pandemic that just took place. A lot of people lost their jobs and so that's going to be really important because the loss of the job is very devastating to a family. The whole family feels it. It's not just the parent who lost that job or the parents who lost that job, but it's felt throughout the whole family structure. So I think the economic recovery and bringing back jobs and bringing it from a business perspective, not from a nonprofit perspective, but from a business perspective to be able to, you know, create more jobs and help those that are already struggling. So that's going to be top priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Grohava, you have one minute.
Thank you. I do believe that the number one priority is going to be to address the ongoing health and economic impacts and repercussions associated with the COVID-19 virus. My initial plan would be to work collaboratively with all sectors of the community to create a sustainable action plan that can help us get through this immediate need, but start preparing for all of the changes that are going to happen as a result of what this new normal is going to look like. I think that we need to reassess the public health response and make sure that we better prepare because like the rest of the nation, we were ill-prepared in Pima County for all that has to happen when we go into this kind of shutdown. And so there will be more future health crises and I think that it's important for us to have a plan, to work with all of our jurisdictions within Pima County, including the city of Tucson, to create a coordinated effort to make sure that we are better prepared. And then we will have at some point a vaccine and we have to look at that as well.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez, you have 30 seconds.
Yeah, you know, unfortunately, Pima County has a reputation of being anti-business and I think that they went above and beyond the executive order from the governor, which made it really impossible for businesses to come back. You know, many of the businesses are not coming back anymore and we have to address that. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Ms. Grohava. Actually, you both have mentioned the virus. So Ms. Grohava, here's the next question for you. We've seen the effects of COVID-19 on public health in our community. Do you believe in a mandate for wearing masks and what would you do differently than what is being done now?
Thank you. I do believe in a mandate to wear masks. I think that every single scientific, all of the data that has come out has said that wearing a mask or some sort of face covering greatly reduces the amount of the spread and the likelihood of catching the virus. I think that we've seen firsthand how quickly this virus can spread, considering the fact that our president is right now dealing with the ramifications of not being socially distant or wearing face coverings and how quickly it can spread even amongst people who are trying, who think they're safe because they've tested negative. We really need to reassess our public health response. I think that that's going to be very critical because our community cannot continue to go back to whatever our new normal is going to be if we are not feeling safe and comfortable. We continue to have spikes and the positivity rates fluctuate dramatically depending on what neighborhood you're in. I think if you look at the neighborhoods that are the hardest hit by this pandemic, many of them are in District 5 and our neighboring District of District 2 with many people of color and people that are living in poverty. And so we have to be able to address that as a county in order for us to move forward together. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez, you have one minute to respond.
Sure. You know, I guess it depends on who you're talking to. I don't believe in a mandate for that. I think that it's going to be up to the individual to take care of themselves and if they're feeling sick to go ahead and not be out. But it depends who you listen to. Dr. Fauci came and said, well, masks will help and then, well, they won't. So you don't really know who to believe. The CDC also came out and said that 6% of the, or 6% or 7% of the actual deaths were actually pure COVID deaths. So you're hearing all kinds of different things. I think it's important for us to analyze what's coming out of even the medical community because you have medical community on both sides of the aisle who are saying the opposite thing. So I think that's going to be important to listen to both sides and not just one side. So no, at this point, I don't want a mandate. I suggest it.
Thank you. Ms. Grohava, you have 30 seconds to respond.
Yeah. Unfortunately, what's happened is as a result of how politicized this issue has become, instead of really looking to science and epidemiology and really just taking that information as factual, it's become rhetoric where we may or may not, who's telling us this and who's telling us that. The CDC has been compromised at this point because of political ideologies. And so I think it's important for us to just keep our community safe, put the politics aside, and look at what's in the best interest of our community. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez, you have one and a half minutes to answer this question. What actions would you take in the future to improve public health across the county and decrease health disparities by income and race and ethnicity?
Well, you know, I think that healthcare is, everybody should have healthcare. I think that that's actually one of the responsibilities that the Board of Supervisors has is healthcare along with all the other responsibilities that they have. And I think working closely with our health department, but also with other organizations that are in Pima County that are also working towards that end. And so I think it's going to be important to get everybody in the room and on the same page in order to come up with some kind of sensible idea of how to address the issues that are going on as far as the health is concerned. You know, I don't like to use identity politics. I mean, disease knows no parties, knows no economic status. It hits everybody and we're seeing it right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Grohava, you have one minute.
Yeah, thank you. I think that it's been very evident how significant the health disparities are based on race and income. And so it is the job of the Pima County Health Department to address that, making sure that we provide free or low-cost options for many of our community members is really critical. And I think working with some of our medical partners like the El Rio Neighborhood, the El Rio Clinics, all of those is going to be really, that is also really critical. I think our infrastructure really needs to improve in order for us to address any of these unplanned emergencies. As I mentioned, we are going to have a vaccine at some point. And so how is that going to roll out? How are we going to ensure that we have the partnerships that we need to with all of our municipalities and towns to make sure that we can adequately provide what is necessary for every person that's in our community?
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez, you have 30 seconds to respond.
Again, you know, I agree with Ms. Grohava. It has been politicized and I think that's one of the problems within the Board of Supervisors is that a lot of the decisions that are being made in the Board of Supervisors have a political motivation. I really want to take that out of that because that's, I think that if we get elected, we're elected to serve all people and not make political issues out of this disease or any other issues that are going on within our county. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, Ms. Grohava. Will you support the county's Sonoran Desert Preservation Plan?
Yes, absolutely will. I think that it's one of the cornerstones of Pima County and one of the things that has preserved our community and our natural resources that bring people and draw people not only to live here, stay here, but all of our tourism that is generated because of our beautiful environment, our beautiful Sonoran Desert. I think that it's important for us to work with, work to see how can we expand upon it, improve upon it, make sure that we have the infrastructure set up so we can encourage businesses to be a part of our community, maybe look at some of those businesses that really would like to build homes maybe in some of our more pristine areas. Let's try to redirect some of those resources into our inner cities and established neighborhoods where we can really improve where most of us live. I think that one of the things that I have noticed is that we really need, have the need for more parks, more outdoor places for our children to be and, you know, our little leagues and communities to get together and just really enjoy this beautiful environment of ours. And so that's something that I would like to expand upon in looking at some of the ways that we can really encourage our young people to get out into and really learn what conservation is all about.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez, you have one minute.
No, I think that preserving the Sonoran Corridor is important. I think we just need to be careful of how we go about this. You know, Pima County has had a reputation of buying land. 18% of the land in all of Arizona is privately owned. So here in Pima County, the county has spent many, many years buying off land. They've bought off ranches. They've bought even the machinery for the ranches. They've just bought Bakaloo Farms a few years ago and, you know, so they're going about and buying private property, taking it off the tax roll. Then what happens is that they do it under the guise of preserving and when it comes to preserving, guess who has to pay for all that is a taxpayer. Again, I'm all for preserving the Sonoran Desert. I love the Sawato. I love the area that I live in, but we need to be careful there. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Grohava, you have 30 seconds to respond.
Yeah, I think protecting our Sonoran Desert and the conservation plan is a guiding principle for this region. I would like to, regardless of future incorporation efforts or any other kind of outlying pressures, that is going to be a responsibility that I will take very seriously because I think that we really need to ensure the preservation of all of our natural resources in order to stay Pima County. That's inherent to who we are and I want to make sure that this environment is available for future generations.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez, you have one and a half minutes to answer this question. What is your plan to improve the transit infrastructure?
I'm sorry, you got cut off. The what?
What is your plan for improving the transit infrastructure?
Well, you know, right now I think public transportation is important. Unfortunately, we need to do some real planning when it comes to that. You know, we have buses that are running half empty. We have the trolley car that is running empty. And so we need to really make a study regarding that before we invest millions of dollars into that infrastructure. I think that's important. It's lovely. I've ridden it. It's awesome. But unfortunately, you know, a lot of people are just jumping on there and when the transit police or whoever they are come on, they jump off. And so, you know, it's kind of a losing, there's got to be a better way to monitor that because I can't, I think it's a losing proposition a lot of times, so.
Thank you. Ms. Grohava, you have one minute to respond.
So I live on Mission Inahoe and one of the things that I've noticed is that I work downtown. So in theory, it should be very easy for me to get there without the use of a vehicle. Unfortunately, most of our environment and where we live, there aren't usable bike paths that are safe, not really great walking places. So if we really wanted to try to go, you know, to protect our environment and our air quality, it's really difficult to do that. And if you wanted to use the bus, I work with Pima County Teen Court. I work right downtown. We have a lot of participants that used to come on the bus to come to programming and the routes are not timely. They don't always go to certain areas of our community. So even though we are in Pima County, you can't access coming into central Tucson on our bus route. So I think that it's important for us to look at where we already have infrastructure that needs to be improved upon in order to provide access and opportunity for all of our community members.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez, you have 30 seconds to respond.
Yeah, I think when the reason is that, you know, I used to have a bus route that used to run right in front of my house and they cut it out. They've had to re- remove some of the routes because unfortunately, the ridership is not there. I agree with Ms. Grohava that most people rather take their car. It's a lot easier. And unfortunately, that mentality hasn't changed and they continue to do that. So right now, we're investing millions in dollars for transit and nobody's using it, then it's lost. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Grohava, you have one and a half minutes to answer this question. This summer was the hottest on record and with cooling centers closed, many families and children who don't have central air conditioning at home were suffering. Do you think the county should increase the number of cooling centers in the future? And we may be facing hotter summers after this.
I think unfortunately, that's going to be a reality with our increasing temperatures and climate issues. And so I was really happy to see that the city of Tucson created, you know, a proclamation of a climate emergency and I think that the county has to do the same. The impacts of global warming are going to be continuing to hit us. Given that, I do think that it's important for us to have more cooling centers, create spaces that are safe for families to get together because we've seen that in TUSD. We had children that really wanted to come on campus because of the connectivity issues and because of the fact that their homes were so hot. It's difficult to learn when you're in an environment like that. And so this pandemic has really highlighted, I think, the inequities and the really, our community members that are the have and the have nots. And we as a community and as the county have to try to bridge that opportunity to make sure that our community members are not, our elderly, our very young, our most vulnerable are not ill or worse because of the increasing heat in our communities.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez, you have one minute.
You know, it's unfortunate this pandemic hit, we could say at a very bad time. You know, we do have some very hot temperatures here in Arizona. We haven't had our share of the monsoons that we have in the past. And, you know, I've seen them personally. I joined one of the rec centers there too. As I get older, I need to be a little more flexible and so I've been going out there and working out. And I love seeing older folks just sitting there. They're just sitting there because it's probably they're on fixed income. There's probably very hot in their home, so they enjoy just going there and sitting there in the cool. So obviously, it really burdens me to see that and to see now that they don't even have that opportunity. So that's very troubling for me. So I think definitely those are some of the issues that we're going to have to address on the Board of Supervisors. It is our responsibility. We need to take care of our old folks. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Grohava, you have 30 seconds to respond.
So my mom was a librarian at Samhaina, right in the heart of South Tucson. And she said that when it got really warm, you could see the influx of people coming in mostly to just get out from the heat. We see it on our transit system, on our buses, anywhere that there's cool air, we're going to have people there mostly because it's so hot everywhere else. And so the necessity to have cooling centers where people can go and get out from that heat is going to be really important. But we also need to acknowledge that there are some people that live in homes that have, that are also suffering.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez, you have one and a half minutes to answer this question. Since Ms. Grohava brought up libraries, we've been seeing an increasing burden on our county libraries to provide social services, including computer and internet access for those who can't afford it at home, lunch and snacks for children, and many other non-librarian kinds of services. Do you think our county social services should receive more funding so that librarians, so that other county services should get more funding so that the libraries can focus more on books and literary programming?
You know, that's a very interesting question. A lot of the people, and I've been to a lot of the libraries here in town, the different places, a lot of people that are using the libraries are as places, a, a lot of people that are using the libraries are, as Ms. Grahava stated, they're, they're, I don't know if she mentioned the word homeless, but they're, they're the ones who really are taking up a lot of the computer space and a lot of the, the, the areas around the library. I think that we need to address that issue. There's a lot of agencies out there that are willing to work with homeless people. I worked in that area for 10 years and, and we worked mostly with homeless families. So it's something that, you know, we have to come to the understanding that there's homeless people want to be homeless, that there's nothing you can do about it. I've worked with them for 10 years and there's some who choose that lifestyle. And so I think that we have to be careful in, in facilitating that. And instead trying to redirect them to some of the programs that are available, that they can attend and that they can be helped in those, those particular areas.
Thank you. Ms. Grahava, you have one minute.
I think that it's important to note that libraries are really hubs of the community and hubs for information. And so while we do have a population of people that are coming out to get out from, out of the heat, they're also coming in to read. We have so many students and families that were parked outside of, in the parking lots at our libraries because that, they had access. So they could get wifi when we were in a total shutdown. I think that that kind of, that opportunity to provide some sort of equity and access is really critical. And so if we can expand the kind of services that people can obtain at the libraries, we should, especially if we can work with our nonprofit partners to, for them to also provide those services. And it's not an additional cost to the county, it's just more services for our community members. We vote there, we get information there, some of our children have access to computers and wifi there. I think we have so many books that I want to encourage people to use our libraries.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gonzalez, you have 30 seconds to respond.
I think it's important for us to realize, you know, there's a lot of organizations out there that are working to, to help this homeless communities. And we need to, I, I don't think that, you know, the library has its purpose. And I think that, that we should maintain that purpose and not be all things to all people. We can't do that. We need to focus on, on what the library's intention and what they were intended to be. And, and that's important, you know, in the area of, okay, I'm told to stop.
Thank you. Ms. Grahava, you have one and a half minutes to answer this question. What do you see as your role in the public controversy over funding and oversight of the Sheriff's Department?
So, um, thank you for that question because I think our responsibility, our fiduciary responsibility as a member of the Board of Supervisors is to approve the budgets of the Sheriff's Department. But it's not just approving the budget. Because if that were the case, that could be allocated to some other government agency or directly. We do have oversight over the functions of, I, I think it's our, our responsibility to be informed on what it is that the sheriff is doing. So the sheriff is, they're, they're obviously their own duly elected officer. And we don't want to overstep, but I do think that it's important, especially in light of all of the attention that has been national attention and local for criminal justice reform, that that has to be part of plans that I would like to see as a member of the Board of Supervisors from our sheriff. I have had the opportunity to hear from both Sheriff Napier and our former Sheriff Nanos that both are interested in moving forward with criminal justice reform and looking at how can we provide additional supports, additional access for our community members? All of that is going to be really critical. I would love to call 911 as a community member and have some sort of assistance with a mental health crisis. That is also an emergency for a lot of people. And not every emergency needs to be responded to by somebody who is in law enforcement with a gun. I think we can have a team approach and I would really like to explore that kind of option.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez, you have one minute to respond.
Yeah, unfortunately, you know, we want our Sheriff's Department or TPD Department to be marriage counselors, to be domestic violence counselors, to be mental health experts, to be crisis managers. And, and that's, that's, that you can't demand that. They have to make split minute decisions when it comes to addressing issues. I know, and I don't know if TPD used to have, but they used to have what they called a MAC team. And we used to use them a lot because I worked with the homeless and I worked, you know, and we ran into a lot of mental health issues. And the MAC team was a specialized team, mental health expert that would, would go with the police when they were called to address particular issues. One of the things that I would like to do as far as the Sheriff's Department is provide some funding to get some additional training as far as that's concerned. But we cannot expect them to be psychiatrists, psychologists, babysitters or any of those things. I think we need to best equipment as best possible.
Thank you. Ms. Grahava, you have 30 seconds to respond.
What I really don't want is for our community to not, to be afraid to call 911 when they need help. And so we want to make sure that the person that's responding has had the proper training to be able to assess what's going on and that not every call requires someone to be arrested. But we do have true emergencies, burglaries, car accidents, people with weapons. Those are the kinds of things that perhaps we should explore, really pushing non-emergency numbers, the kinds of emergencies that we're calling about, giving some latitude there. Because it is important that people have access to support when they need it.
Thank you. And Mr. Gonzalez, you have a minute and a half to answer this question. Stone Garden is a federal grant program of money to defray the cost of sheriff deputies cooperating with the Border Patrol. Do you support the county's acceptance of Stone Garden funding?
You know, that's, that funding has been accepted in prior years forever. And so I think that, you know, there's, it's no secret that, that the, the Pima County and the corridor there is a, a trade route for drugs, for human trafficking, for all kinds of things. And so I think that they, they do need that additional funding to be able to address those particular issues as far as equipment is concerned, overtime is concerned. If we look at the budget right now, the sheriff has done, they've had, they've been in the red for, for many years. And sheriff, this sheriff has balanced the budget. And so he's doing a good job and, and on top of that has given raises to the officers. So I think that that additional funding should be accepted and not politicized, but just accepted so they could address some of those crimes that are committed along the, the, the trail, the trafficking trail. So it's important. So thank you to the, the sheriff that he has balanced the budget and, and doing a fine job. But I think we need to continue to accept those funds.
Thank you. Ms. Grahava, you have one minute to respond.
Um, I do not believe, I, I agree that the Pima County supervisors should not have accepted the funds. And I, if I were on the board, I would not have voted to accept those funds. I don't think it's the role of local government like Pima County or the city of Tucson to provide the federal support for, to the Border Patrol for immigration enforcement. If there is a crime committed here in our area, then it's something that we need to respond to. But I don't think that, and I don't want our local law enforcement to serve as an additional arm for, for immigration enforcement. Our community needs to see our local law enforcement as support and someone to turn to when they need help, not someone that they're afraid is going to separate families and start asking a lot of citizenship status questions. I don't think that's our role.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez, you have 30 seconds to respond.
Sure. You know, the last time I heard drug trafficking is a crime. And, and, and that is something that the Sheriff's Department can address. It's not a federal issue per se. It is a crime here in Pima County. So to me, I think it's important, you know, I, I, working with the immigrant community, there's a lot of sheriffs up there that, that won't, you know, that if they address an issue, that, you know, that they're able to address that issue and not necessarily have to address an immigration status. That's, that's barfetched. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Grahava, you have a minute and a half to answer this question. Will you continue to support the county's funding of Job Path and other workforce training programs?
Yes, absolutely. I think that that is going to be a real economic driver for Pima County and really important for us to continue to invest dollars into those kind of programs that are going to help train workers whose positions may not exist anymore. Some of them related to COVID, some of them related to changes in technology and like where our economy is going. I do think it's important for us to provide those options. But I also think that we have young people in our communities that really need to be tied in with employers and real work experiences so they have access to these really wonderful and high-paying jobs that are here locally. This is going to be something that is going to be really important, especially for the future and our recovery from the economic fallout from this pandemic is for us to invest dollars. And I do believe that every dollar in prevention and it will, will come back tenfold. And so our, our opportunity, the opportunities that we provide people to be trained are really going to save the county in the long run, the funds that are related to supporting people that are out of work, supporting people that, you know, don't have access to quality healthcare. And so instead of going in for a routine wellness check, we're going in for some crisis services. Those are all costs that will come back at some point. And so for us to provide people opportunities to be gainfully employed and contributing to our community, those are all positives in my book.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez, you have one minute.
Yeah, I agree. You know, it's unfortunate that a lot of the schools got rid of the, a lot of the training, the welding and the body and fender and, and the electrical programs, you know. One of my, my wife works for a company here and one of the guys who was, that Sawarita had a mechanic program. He got hired on as a mechanic's helper. And, you know, here years later, he's now the vice president of operations in that company. It's a huge company. So I think those are very important again to, because not everybody's made to go to college. The reality is that plumbers get good money, electricians make good money. There's a lot of other crafts that make very good money. I think that we should continue to support anything that, that can help our young people. They, they need a trade that not, doesn't necessarily involve, you know, a college degree and underground water, whatever, you know? It's, it's something that, that they need definitely a trade. And so I, I support.
Thank you. Ms. Grahava, you have 30 seconds.
In Tucson Unified, we've noticed that a lot of people that work on our HVACs, our plumbers, our electricians, they retire and are asked to come back because we don't have enough young people to fill those positions, those apprentice programs, the expansion of those. So I'm, that's why I'm really glad that Tucson Unified and a lot of other, all of us in this area are part of the Joint Technology Education District, which is JTED, that provides opportunities and trainings for our young people while they're attending all of our high schools. And then we're opening up a new high school with TUSD as the educational piece. So those programs are expanding and continuing and we need to do more of them.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez, you have one and a half minutes. Will you support the county's involvement in hosting asylum seekers?
Hi, um, you know, that's, that's a very loaded question. I think that there's a lot of people have come here seeking asylum with good reason. And I think that there's, there's need to be a clear path for them to be able to, while they're seeking asylum, that they are, are helped while they, while they are here. So I think that's going to be important, you know? But I also think that if, if the case is closed and, and, and they can't prove their case, I think that it's important that, you know, that, that we don't overload the system like it is right now. Right now, the system is overloading. That's the other thing that we need more judges to hear these cases. And I, and I think a lot of them do have some legitimate reasons for seeking asylum here. So I think that we need more judges, we need to speed up the process, both, both processes. You know, if you're here and, and to go ahead and, and get them through the system. And i- if they lose their case, then you know, so be it. But I think we do need to hear, get more judges here to share those cases.
Thank you. Ms. Grahava, you have one minute.
Yes, I'm, I am supportive of continuing to offer asylum to those who are seeking it here in Pima County and anywhere else. I believe it is our responsibility as United States to do that. But I also think it's important for us to continue to provide options and a clear pathway to, of our immigration status. And I think that it's one of the faults of our national system that is resulting in, in the kinds of pressure that our local systems are having to take on. We are in Pima County, a hub for refugees and other people who are seeking asylum. We see them in all of our schools and in all of our communities. And I think that our job is to become welcoming and become partners. You know, I, I think that that is important and to make sure that those critical services that are needed are provided.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez, you have 30 seconds.
Sure. You know, the, the reality is that you gave, you gave the, the job description for the border supervisors. The reality is that the border supervisors are governed by the legislature. So there are limitations. And, and that's important for us to stay within our lanes, for us to stay within what authority we have and not delve into, you know, Ms. Grahava mentioned immigration with, with the Sheriff's Department, but here we are involved in immigration. So it's, it's important to make, make that distinction.
Thank you. Ms. Grahava, this question is for you. You have one and a half minutes. What is your opinion of the Rosemont Mine and what would you do about it?
I am not in favor of digging into our beautiful Catalinas. I, I think that that is something that I've been vocally opposed to. And one of the reasons I think why when I was running in the primary, there was, there was a lot of mining and other metal companies that were providing funding to my opponent because I have been vocal about my opposition to it. I think that it's important for us to preserve those areas. And, and I'm, I would be opposed to any kind of mining, opening up new mines. That's not something that I would be in favor of. I do think that, you know, if we look at our environment and the results of some of the mining that has happened around our state, you can see that it has drastically impacted our water table, our air quality, and many of the sites are ISOs. And so it's important for us to understand that while we get promises about, you know, safe kind of mining, there I have side, I have many examples that I can cite of the detrimental environmental impacts to not just our environment, our community, our health because of things that are happening all around us that get into the water table. My Nana lived, lived on the south side of Tucson where TCE water really devastated the health of so many people there. So it's important that we understand that impacts travel throughout our community.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez, you have one minute to respond.
Okay, I want to clarify something. I, I think Ms. Grahava met her other opponent, Ms. Hernandez, because I have not gotten any money from any mining organizations. I just want to clarify that. With that being said, you know, I, I think when I ran the first time that we're still, I mean, that's been stopped over and over again. And when I, when I actually ran eight years ago, I actually went and toured to see what is it, or went to the offices to see what is it that they were doing. It's a totally different type of mining that they're doing while they're digging, they're planting. The, the water use has been, it's, we're using more water on the pecan grove, a lot more water than they would use in that mine. This is also going to create, I mean, Arizona is a mining town. This is going to create a lot of jobs, good paying jobs. So I am for that, even though I have not received any money from them. So shame on them. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Grahava, you have 30 seconds to respond.
Mr. Gonzalez is correct. And I thought I was clear, just to be sure. I said it, the primary, my opponent. So my primary opponent receives some funding that way. But I appreciate that. I do think that it's important to note that it's not about you, the use of water, it's the pollution of. it's the pollution of the water and everything that's left behind. And we have examples all over Arizona of, um, towns that were devastated when the mines came in, everything was flourishing and great. And then as soon as, you know, there was no need for the town, everybody left and you're dealt with the environmental impacts that are left. I think it's important for us to remember that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez, you have the next question first, one and a half minutes. Do you support building a new streetcar line that would go through the south side and to the airport and possibly displace residents on the south side?
As previously mentioned, you know, we do have a bus line that already runs all the way to the airport. Uh, I don't think that, uh, we've seen the, the streetcar and as I previously mentioned, it's not being used. So, you know, to invest millions and millions of dollars, maybe talking about billions of dollars to do something like that right now at this particular point, I don't think it's a good idea at all. Uh, again, the buses run down to the airport. So I think the transportation and the way to get there is already there. And I don't think we need to displace any more residents or spend any more money at this particular time until we get our own budget, uh, squared away, that we cannot, uh, invest, you know, all this millions of dollars into a new form of transportation.
Thank you. Ms. Gravava, you have one minute.
Mr. Gonzalez, and I completely agree on this issue. Um, I don't want to displace anybody. I think that we can look at the kinds of stories that we're hearing through Bajo stories of the devastation and the loss when the freeway was built and what happened to all of this really tight-knit community right around here downtown. I mean, I can, I can see the freeway and you look at the pictures of what used to be there and what is there now. I think that we need to utilize and improve the, the systems that we already have in place. I don't want to displace any of our homeowners and, um, or any of our communities.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez, you have 30 seconds.
Well, I'll just repeat what I just finished saying is that again, you know, the, the, the current transit system is, uh, okay for right now. Like I said, the, the, the link, the, the, the train that was put downtown, I would have hoped that they, uh, more people were using it. They're not using it. It's a lot easier to drive your car and get to wherever you need to go and not wait, you know. And I know people who ride the bus, who ride it out of necessity because, you know, having to spend two hours to get to a place that would take you, uh, 30 minutes in a car, it's ridiculous.
Thank you. Ms. Gravava, this question is for you. You have one and a half minutes. What do you think about having a bond for repairing our county roads?
I, I think that our community needs to have the faith that their funding is going to be spent appropriately. So what I would rather do is create a plan where we can show progress in that area and, um, make sure, like with bonds, we've had them in TUSD. If you don't have all five members of your, your board supportive and advocates for it, there, it's going to be, right out of the gate, there's going to be some division and, um, naysayers that are supposed to be really part of pushing forward and encouraging community members to, um, buy into, you know, to, to vote for the bonds. And so I would rather us look at the kind of infrastructure projects that we need to do in our established communities, um, work on those, work on bypass. Let our community see that we're making progress in these areas and improving upon these areas with the resources that we have and clearly articulate what it is that can be done if a bond passes. Uh, I don't think that our community is, um, I, I think the community needs to have more faith in the board and how we're going to use the funds and resources that we already have before we go out to ask for more.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez, you have one minute.
The county has gone time out, time and time again, asking for more funds. Proposition 463 was just that, raising taxes to fix the roads. Well, the, the problem with that is that the county pay, uh, spend $260,000 promoting that and advertising that. I was on the opposite side. We had $10,000 and as you saw in the elections, we beat them pretty handily. The reason that is, is not because we were brilliant strategists. The reason was that people do not trust the Pima County Board of Supervisors who has received millions and millions of dollars to fix the roads and haven't done it. We've had eight, uh, 20 years plus of, of failing roads and the county failing to, um, give that money, uh, to the road projects to fix our roads. They haven't done it. And so we're $1.4 billion in debt right now. That was the same amount that was eight years ago when I ran. Nothing has changed. So no, I, I don't agree to, to have the county, um, go out for more money.
Thank you. Ms. Gravava, you have 30 seconds.
Um, my understanding and looking at the Pima County budget is that we are, we have a $1.4 billion budget. The general fund is 617 million. Um, I think that what we need to do is be able to show our community that we're making progress in fixing the roads. Um, one of the concerns that I have is that we've built up roads and far out areas to connect, um, developing, like developing communities into what we already have established. But as a result, we have a lot of the, um, streets that I frequent every day with huge potholes. So we need to work on our existing roads first.
Thank you. I thank each of you. You each now have one minute for a closing statement. Mr. Gonzalez, we'll start with you.
Well, I want to thank you again for the invitation and, uh, thank you, Ms. Gravava for, uh, they don't call it debates anymore, they call them forums now. Anyway, um, you know, uh, again, I ran eight years ago. We had the same issues that, uh, that, that were happening eight years ago that are happening today. That's the reason why I put my hat back in the ring to try to make a change. I care about this community. I volunteered for 40 years in the different, uh, areas and, and I, and I've done it, uh, with my whole heart, hoping to make a difference in the community. Uh, we can't expect to do the same things over and over or have the same ideology and expect for things to change. That's just not going to happen. So I think right now we need a completely different change. View it from a different perspective, from a business perspective. Approach the budget from a different, uh, business perspective. Approach everything that we do prioritizing, um, what is, uh, the, you know, what is the difference between the needs and the wants of the community? That's going to be real important. So thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Ms. Gravava, you have one minute for a closing statement.
Well, I want to thank you very much for your time. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, for providing, um, our community an opportunity to hear from both of us. I think that it's really critical for everyone to see that there are differences and similarities, things that we agree upon, things that we don't, and very different ways that we would accomplish some things. I think the main function of the Pima, of Pima County is protecting our public health. And that is not a business, um, that's not a money-making endeavor. It is something that we have to provide supports and infrastructure to make sure it happens. I am a mom of three, uh, born and raised here in Tucson, and I want to make sure that our community is great for all future generations. Take care of who is here now, all of our most vulnerable populations. And I really want to, um, ask for your vote and support. Uh, my name is Adelita Grijalva. If you have any questions, my email, um, is adelitaforsupervisor, website is adelitaforsupervisor.com. I look forward to hearing from you and I want to thank you for the opportunity to, to share some of my thoughts. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate both of you being with us. And thank you to our audience for sharing this forum and learning from the candidates. Be sure to vote by mail or early voting or at the polling place on Tuesday, November 3rd. Be sure to vote. This is an important election nationally and locally. You can view a recording of this forum on the Facebook page for the League of Women Voters of Greater Tucson, as well as our YouTube channel. This is Vivian Hart for the League of Women Voters of Greater Tucson. Thank you for joining us today. Bye-bye.